Everybody, I'll call the meeting to order here after six o'clock.
Sorry.
Pledge of allegiance, apologize for not having a flag in here. We will.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would retain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Starting with January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting minutes.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second to approve this consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Ever you say there's no liquor licenses?
Nope.
Move on to number five. Any public comment? Anybody want to speak?
Other than to say it's hard to hear back here.
We don't have any microphones. We'll, we'll speak up.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. Any public comment from anybody? Go ahead, sir. State your name, please.
Certainly.
You can stand up. That's fine. You don't stand. All right. That's fine. Sure.
Get tired of that.
That's, we all, we all are, so.
Thank you.
I'll give them to Amber as well. I'll skip.
Skip.
Half way. Those of you who don't know me, I'm Skeet Jacobson. I just want to talk about budget, kind of a philosophy of budget. Read off of this. I tend to go on bunny trails and hopefully I'll keep you off the bunny trail. But I'm, I'm here today as a longtime resident and retired member of our community to share my thoughts on county budgeting practices. Specifically, I'd like to ask the board to evaluate the increases over the past budgets with an eye toward aligning future budgets more closely with funding needed, funding needed for core services. I also urge you to consider limiting budget growth in the years ahead. To provide some personal context, I live on a small acreage in the southernmost part of Lyons Township. Like many in our community, I manage my household expenses on a fixed retirement income, which also includes a modest inflation forecast of three percent. This budget allows me to cover essential costs such as my mortgage and set aside for stuff or for home and all the matters, as well as an occasional trip. However, increasing property taxes poses a significant challenge to maintain financial balance. With that in mind, I ask the board to carefully consider how current and future budgets might better reflect a focus on essential services, I kind of want to emphasize that phrase, and avoid placing undue financial pressure on residents like me. And you'll notice here, I have a chart here from a website called Iowa's Tax Relief, a very useful site if you're not familiar with it, has a lot of data on budgets and levies of not only the counties, but cities and school districts and shows their increases and balances and debts and whatnot. Since 2016, the inflation rate has been thirty-two point seven percent for Mills County in Iowa as an average. But the Mills County tax growth has been fifty-two percent. That's like a twenty percent over inflation that Mills County's tax rate has been. So I, I just feel like that's really excessive. It feels like if we take into account inflation, we're twenty percent above that, it can only mean that we have growth in our government, you know, I understand expenses or whatever. And I think those need to be reviewed. So as you can see from this chart, the trend in Mills County property taxes is increasing at a rate far greater than the inflation, even as the county's population is decreasing, which makes me think that there is more to the growth of the county's budget than just inflation. So I'm asking the board to consider two options. First, cap any new budgets at two percent total spending. While I understand that the state's recent legislation capped the general basic levy, property tax levy, as a taxpayer, I am responsible for paying all property taxes. So I urge you to take a comprehensive review of the total property tax request, not just part of it. And then second, conduct a thorough budget optimization with the goal of focusing on essential services such as public safety, infrastructure, health services, environmental management, and then reducing or eliminating spending on items that do not directly support essential services. And you, second, I see the chart there that kind of show indicates, you know, bottom is the essential and the needed, raising up in priority through the expected services such as, and then on into the amenities and the more what we call luxury desire, whatever you want to phrase it. Of course, as simplistic outline of the process, a detailed review would include consideration of secondary and desired services and evaluation of the receipt, reasons for the service growth, whether driven by regulatory requirements, location needs, and other factors. However, I believe there is room to roll back, that's a Walmart phrase, roll back some of the discretionary spending incorporated into the budget over time. The goal should be to right-size the budget to reflect the county's current needs and priorities would be reducing the budget by twenty percent would be an ambitious yet worthwhile objective. Now I'm gonna go off script there again. I'm basically to the end. By twenty percent, there's no way, you know, just to do that off the cuff. I know you guys worked hard at it. Last fall, I saw some of the comments. And it wouldn't be, you know, all right, just cut twenty percent of budget will die. So I would like to see a plan from you guys to figure out how to reduce this, cut this budget back, get some, get rid of some of this growth we've had. If it's a five-year plan, talk about the things that, you know, do we have luxury or amenities in there? Yeah, they're nice to have, but right now let's focus on the essential and the needed, the expected, and try to bring this budget back down to a more reasonable factor that, you know, looks more like what the inflationary growth is, not twenty percent of.
Sure.
That's my comments, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Go ahead, sir.
My name is Douglas Jensen. I've been to a couple of board meetings, but I haven't been able to recently. So thank you for making the opportunity to have an evening meeting where more of us can attend. Thank you for your service to the county. I had two things that I wanted to address, the first of which was the ice storm on December thirteenth that I know, as the, the local newspaper quoted, it was, it crippled our county. About a year ago, I came and spoke to you after our storm in January of twenty-four, how my rural residence was snowed in for four days where we couldn't get out of our driveway because the roads being piled. And so I expressed my concerns then, and now I'm coming to ask you to review the county snow removal plan of where it explicitly says that we're not going to treat roads between the hours of seven PM and five PM unless the county disaster plan is implemented. I know that's very wise and prudent use of finances, but when people's lives are at stake, especially when we live in a county where many of us commute, that I think revision is warranted. So that, that's what I would ask of you, and I'm willing to serve if you would like help in reviewing and revising. The second thing I wanted to bring up was the pipeline that is planned for our county in that while the Tallgrass Company is following the Iowa statute, according to chapter four seventy-nine, they're exploiting the five-mile loophole and not needing to have a public hearing prior to approaching landowners. What I would ask of you is to press for the Iowa Utilities Commission to have that hearing here in Glenwood rather than elsewhere as the statute would allow, so that local citizens can attend and provide their input. So those are my two requests to review the snow removal plan and to press to have that public hearing here in Glenwood.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ted? Yeah, Ted McDowell.
I'll be really quick.
It's budget season, I believe. I don't know the exact calendar, but year after year, the county has traditionally come out with a, with a proposed budget beginning. Usually a pie in the sky number, something like ten, twelve percent increase. I'd like to see that practice stopped. I'd like to sharpen the pencils a little bit more beforehand. There's, I just, I, I know there's some uncertainty in there. I, I know you got to build in some uncertainty. I don't think there's any reason to, to, to ask for a, for a max increase of twelve or thirteen percent. And then obviously, once you get something across the finish line, sure, I'd love to see a budget reduction of twenty percent. You know, I would, but I also know that that's going to be tough, politically and otherwise. But you got, please do everything you can to keep the increases in line with inflation at a minimum or at a maximum. So, okay.
Thanks, sir.
Oh, and I will second, the roads on December thirteenth were terrible, like the worst I've ever seen. So I don't know what, why, I don't know what happened, but they were really bad. So that's all I got.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on to item number six, committee updates. I had a MAPPA finance meeting the other day. They just approved a couple of bills that were coming through the MAPPA's department for us, some studies going on in the Omaha metro area, so nothing really in our nick.
I attended the Iowa Association of County Supervisor Conference last week on Thursday. And if you don't mind, I'd like to take a moment also. I traveled to Fort Madison earlier today to lay to rest Representative Martin Graber of Iowa House District One Hundred. Not only was he a representative, he was an elder in his church, he was a brigadier general in the Iowa National Guard, and he was a very, very beloved person around our state. And so for that reason, if you don't mind, joining me for just a brief moment of silence. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Kratch?
I had two, three meetings last week. One was on mental health. We're still struggling to figure out what the state's going to do with us. To give you kind of a little heads up, there's some regions that have already been kind of established. We have one down here. I think we have fourteen counties in it. But anyway, this region I'm talking about has fourteen counties like we have also. We have point, one point four million people in this region, and right now the state has selected six people to take care of that region. So this is what we're looking at, folks. We're not sure whether they're going to go ahead and hire people or not, or just try and work their way through this muddy mess. I also attended a NISTA production meeting where our longtime chairperson and CEO for forty years, retired Sherri Clark. She more or less, she didn't start it, but she was more or less a worker there in the early years. And she's a very good advocate for the mentally challenged. So it was sad to see her go because of the knowledge and the power she has, you know, talking to people and trying to convince people, you know, we need to take care of these people. I also attended the statewide supervisors meeting along with Lonnie and Jack. So that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Farrell, you are up. Consideration formal action of a driveway variance for Nicholas Apoff. Is there an address on this?
The address is two four one nine seven Ives Ave.
Thank you.
I don't know how to speak to you guys and them at the same time. Apologize if you can't hear me. I'll try to speak loud while still facing this way. So this is driveway variance submitted. This is the property here. This is the parcel here, and you see they have an entrance here. They want to put an entrance here a hundred feet from the northwest property line, and then eventually split this off to build a residence. So the current use would be to use for agriculture, hay farm right here. But they do have listed in the future it would be used as residential. So we have to consider that when we're looking at the use of it. This is pretty much right where they're looking to put it. We denied it according to our ordinance because it does not meet the site distance required for this hill. Six hundred and ten feet is required on this road. There's a total of two hundred and forty cars per day estimated. That is a two thousand and sixteen number, so it's probably a little bit higher. And we only have two hundred and ninety feet to the top of that hill for site distance. There's really not much place to move it, even if we went directly on the property line. That gives us three hundred and ninety feet versus the six hundred and ten needed. This is one of those situations where I can't recommend it because there is a safety factor involved. It's not adequate for the speed limit on this. What we typically see if this does get approved down the line, homeowner moves in, they either want signs put up, notifying people of blind driveway, or reducing the speed limit. So there is a trickle effect. Or if they purchase the home, they're not aware that it doesn't meet the site distance. So those are kind of some of the issues with this application. So that's kind of the layout of it. It'd be right in here, and that's our main concern, vehicles traveling over that, over that hill at fifty-five mile an hour.
What do you think, gentlemen?
There's, there's no way that they can come in from the top, right?
Well, they own the property. They do have an entrance right on the top. The reason is, again, they want to eventually split it off and sell it to build a home there. So, you know, my recommendation would be to look at alternatives of a shared easement or some access easement, something of that nature.
I don't know that we've ever approved one for site distance that didn't meet the safety concerns we have. It's not a half.
Well, since it's a matter of public safety, we really don't know how safe that site's going to be. You said two hundred and ninety feet we got, two hundred and forty cars, twenty sixteen, and we're supposed to have six hundred and ten feet on that road, fifty-five mile an hour, correct?
Correct.
I will make a motion to deny the variance for Nicholas Apoff at two four one nine seven Ives Avenue.
And I would second that motion for the same purposes, all the, the speed, the traffic, distance.
We have a motion and a second to deny the driveway grants request, two four one nine seven Ives Avenue. Was there any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? This should be denied. You would sign that, Jake?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consideration formal action for the design contract for L sixty-three resurfacing. Would you brief us on where L sixty-three is for the people, the audience?
So we're looking to do a rehab project overlay, beginning at the south city limits of Malvern. Should be starting right on the north side of this bridge, coming all the way down here and around, all the way down to Paddock Ave. Down here. This would be a federally funded project. We have a lot of especially federal funded projects you have to plan for in advance, and we do a five-year construction plan. This was on the plan since I got here three years ago. So it's coming to fruition now in fiscal year twenty-six. So what this agenda item is, to get a design consultant on staff to design that overlay for us, a total of four-mile project. This contract would be with Beanstra and Kim, or shortly B and K, and for a total of sixty-eight thousand dollars, we have budgeted, I don't know the exact number, but I know we have between eighty-five thousand and a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for this design contract.
Gentlemen?
This is the one on the west side of the river, right?
Yes.
Yep. And south out of Malvern, okay.
Originally, we had it to the county line, but when it was first on the books of the five-year plan, but then we had some other projects go through COVID and price spikes, so our account balance went down. And then, so we had to shorten this, basically keep the value budgeted for it the same, but shorten the project half, in half, basically.
This is for design contract only, right?
Correct.
I'd make a motion, are you saying it's for B and K?
B and K, yeah.
B and K contractors at sixty-eight thousand dollars, design of L sixty-three resurfacing.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the design contract for L sixty-three resurfacing with B and K for the fee of sixty-eight thousand dollars. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Do you have any general discussion, Jacob?
A general discussion right now, kind of being the first part of the year. We're just getting projects lined up throughout the spring, summer, and then the coming fall and winter. And then, so we're kind of getting all those together. Once we get our budget approved and finalized by the board here, then I'll be making a Facebook post. If any of you guys don't already, follow our Facebook page, Mills County Secondary Roads. I'll kind of post a list of our anticipated goals for this year. And then as the year goes on, I'll do project updates, kind of let you know where we're at and, you know, things we accomplished and still that we're going to come forward. So look out for that. And then we've talked about it a lot, the bridge out by Emerson, four hundredth street, just south of Jamison Road. The contractor, we got email from him today, is ninety-nine percent sure that he is beginning construction February eleventh. So here in one week, we have a, well, the detour mapped out. Send out a road notification and probably a Facebook post tomorrow, just kind of making the public aware of that bridge being closed. So we're expecting it, probably three to four month construction. A lot of that's going to be weather dependent. Originally, we were hoping to do this in the winter, but being in the spring, we might battle, you know, rising water, the high creek, so that, that could set them back, but we'll just kind of see what mother nature does.
If it rains.
Yeah, if it rains, so.
I could tell you, Jake, I know there's two people in the audience here, Katie and Brad Lewis, who have been dying to get this bridge fixed for quite a while now, so I appreciate you making this a priority. Thank you for that.
Anything else, sir?
That's everything.
Thank you. Bonnie, you're up.
Okay, I had a couple of things. When I talk to you about adding a couple of things, right quick. Congratulations to you guys for the reelection. And thanks for having a meeting that night. And I think the courthouse yard looked beautiful, just inspiring, wonderful. Okay, paving. I think it's been at least five years I went to the board and asked about paving out there on Ives Avenue, and I'm sure it's been that long now. Where do we stand? Or is it because of the GRC, what they're going to do with the state land? Will that be talked about maybe not doing or doing it, or?
We, we really haven't, we, we do have some ideas that's going to take place up there. But we haven't received anything finalized other than the roads that they're going to build off of thirty-four into the south edge of, of the resource center.
So they might not open that one on two hundred and fortieth?
I doubt that. Would we, Jake, the dirt road that used to be on the east side of the?
Yeah, right here. What's the question regarding it?
She asked if there would be any indication of real?
I was going to pay Ives Avenue like they said they would in five years.
I have no plans of it. I don't know who they is, when you refer to them, is it?
Board of Supervisors is they.
I don't think we ever committed to them, Bonnie, but I.
Someone told me check back in five years. Well, it's been five years.
Well, Bonnie, I tell you, you know, I had a gentleman reach out by the name of Reed Allen. He tried doing this process a couple of years ago and trying to get it started up again, and Jake and I have kind of been helping him along the way. But my understanding from Jake and my personal understanding is the best way to go about when it comes to paving a road, if it's not already on the county five-year plan, which I wasn't on the board right now, so I can't speak for that. What I can speak for is Reed Allen is reaching out to Jake, figuring out the costs, figuring out how many people along the stretch road actually support it. If that's something that I can help you with, I'm more than happy to do that. But I think that's, when it comes to the Ives Road, would be the best option moving forward.
Well, I'm sure though, by now, I, like, that's my property out there, and I haven't lived there for a while, but I'm sure the traffic has cut down considerably with the GRC not even having the employees.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
So, you know, if you don't, you don't. I, that's up to you then. Put it in your budget. I had on there about the GRC, but I was informed that, what are you laughing about?
He said without cutting taxes. It's a give and take, you know.
I had on there about the GRC update, but I understand that you guys are completely out of it now.
To an extent, we do have county representation on the board of the Glenwood Redevelopment Corporation. There is county representation, but only one of us go to that. Well, actually, two of us go to that right now. Amber, you're still on it, and Richard's on it. Lonnie and I are, are not on it. We don't really have that much involvement, but Richard and Amber are both on it, trying to steer the way.
Okay. I had somebody else tell me some more information about this development thing. So I know a little bit more about it when, after I, after I wrote that, so. The annex, is that good for Mills County? If you do it? I mean, I don't, I don't know if you've decided or not, but is it good?
What do you mean the annex? Is that the, the Martha Bungie?
With, yeah, with Council Boston, Potawatomi County, is it good for our county?
It will bring growth to our county and a tax base to our county and jobs. So, yes, yes.
So do we keep the tax money?
We don't have, yes, yes, we would receive more tax. We don't have, yes, yes, we would receive more tax money out of it. Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
The reason being, Bonnie, is what's the ballpark number for the wastewater treatment facility upgrade that we would have to do to provide water to?
Water would be, we could probably get water there for 15 million, but the sewer, it would be in the 50 to 60 million dollar range.
So, we'd be looking at 65, 70 million dollars that would have to come out of our budget over a course of time to be able to provide water. And obviously, you can't, and sewer, and you can't have industry up there without those two things. So, it's a, it's a double-edged sword because part of the scenario is if we don't have annexation, and if I believe correctly, we don't have any control over annexation.
They're within, they're within their one and two mile limit anyway, so they can do it whether we, whether we agree to it or not, they can.
If?
Really?
Yes.
If we don't do the, if we don't do the annexation, we're not going to have the funds to be able to upgrade our facility, which then means Councilman's Heritage will never go in. We're not going to have the tax base from that, and we're not going to have the jobs from that. When it comes to taxes, since it will technically be in city limits, you will have to pay a city tax, whatever business is out there, industrial development, they'll have to pay a city tax to the city council blocks, but then they're still going to have to pay a general tax to Mills County because it's still technically in Mills County.
We won't lose any tax money.
We'll get to rural services part.
One thing, I, the gentleman here brought up about the pipeline, and I have been told, and I might be wrong, that if there is a leak or a crack or anything happens to that, that whatever this seed, I'm not sure.
You too.
That it will kill any kind of farmland, animals, and could hurt humans. Is that true?
It's not a good thing when they break. You're correct.
There is an instance in Sotarsia, Mississippi, where one did break. You had a couple of people asphyxiate, then the EMS couldn't get into the area to be able to retrieve them because the oxygen got sucked out of their engine, so they couldn't even drive into there. That's a little bit of a different makeup, just looking at the fact that in Mississippi, I believe Richard and I talked about it, frost line is much different than it is here, so the pipeline was much closer to the surface. Pipeline is another give and take. It's another double-edged sword. And the reason being, Bonnie, is because, number one, right now, you can't use ethanol for sustainable avitational fuel because there's a certain score that they use called carbon intensity score. If you capture the carbon, put it into the pipeline, and then take it elsewhere, whether that be storage or manufacturing, then our ethanol here in Mills County can be used for sustainable avional fuel, which right now, all the ethanol produced in the United States could only make up a third of the demand for sustainable avional fuel. So, we're talking about a big increase per bushel of corn for farmers, especially here in Mills County. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we have setback requirements where they, how far they are from homes, how far they are from churches, schools, businesses. We want to make sure we have a certain amount of safety valves per feet to make sure that if something happens, it's able to be captured in a small area and not, you know, two miles worth of CO2 get put into the air. We want to make sure that we can have a decommissioning plan. So, if a pipeline is built, then in 20 years, if that pipeline's still underground, another company can't come in and buy it and say, hey, I know this was the use for this pipeline, but we just bought the pipeline, we bought the rights, so now we're going to use this and the pipeline without you being able to negotiate it. We talked about it a couple, probably two weeks ago.
A couple of weeks ago.
Two weeks ago or so, we had a couple of landowners come in, a couple supporters of the pipeline come in. Really what it comes down to is, and I'll speak for why I voted the way I voted, and they can speak for why they voted the way they voted. I believed we had $10,000 budgeted in building and zoning specifically to hire outside legal counsel to help us write ordinances. I thought at the time that, you know, we should use that $10,000 to help us draft ordinances that includes those setbacks, that includes those safety valves. We can get the ball running. We already have the money sitting there. We should use the money if it is there and get a basic draft of the CO2 pipeline. Now, the problem is, and they'll talk a little bit about it, is that there are counties that have made CO2 ordinances, and they tried controlling the eminent domain aspect of it, and they tried controlling a few different things that they don't have the legal right to do so. And then those ordinances got put into court, and now they're in the Eighth District Court of Appeals. So, we have to see how, what their verdict is, the Eighth District Court of Appeals. I wanted to do a draft, but Bonnie and Richard, I'll allow you to speak your mind about this, too.
We decided to move forward with the ordinance, but using our own counsel instead of outside legal counsel. It's going to be moving slowly until the pending litigation has answers. So, we're, we're moving forward. It's just slow.
I'm just curious. I know in the paper, some of the landowners want to do it, and that, that's fine. That's their business. I'm just curious of any damage.
It's our understanding that they have 100% agreement with the landowners, but I have not seen that.
Okay. I just going by what they just?
Sure. And, and like Jack, Lonnie commented, all the ordinances that were brought forth with the CO2 pipeline and the Summit Pipeline that come up across Iowa, you know, they bought right away, they've done this, they've done that. But every ordinance is in a court being appealed upon right now. Yes, we're going to move forward with an ordinance, but we're trying to find one that fits us. And after the courts get done with it, get it all shook out, it would be a lot easier to follow one of them than to try and write one that we would be in court immediately with anyway, so.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Next item on the agenda is discussion formal action of the Board of Health vacancy. Appoint new member effective immediately.
Well, Sandra Leaders has been a great member of the Board of Health for quite some time now. She retired from the Jenny Ed location in Malvern. She wants to spend more time traveling with her family, so she did unfortunately resign from our Board of Health, which opens up a vacancy with the Board of Health disposition. We have to have a specific medical requirement. Sandra Leaders found Caitlin Walter of the Glenwood area. Caitlin Walter has the medical requirements, and I, for those reasons, I would make a motion to appoint Caitlin Walter to the Board of Health effective immediately.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Caitlin Walters to fill the Board of Health vacancy. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries, three, nothing. Open discussion. I have nothing. Richard?
Oh, I have nothing.
I just want to say I am very grateful to see the amount of people that are here this evening. I was a little bit worried about how many people would show up, but I am glad that you were taking the opportunity on a Tuesday night to be here. We're doing this for the first six months of the year. I believe our last one will be in July. As long as, you know, if people don't come, that's when they're going to be ended. So, if you can keep on coming, if you can make sure that your neighbors and your friends are coming to these meetings, then we'll continue to have them. So, thank you for being here. And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 6:36 PM.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.